Amy still made a grand marshal, but if anybody has any suggestions. This is another grand marshal's war.
You got a banner.
Okay, let's get started. It's five o'clock. I'll call the Village Board of Oregon to order. And ask Kirk to call the roll.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Kniffer?
Here.
Mankey?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Kampen?
Here, thank you. Item three, approval of May 19th, 2025 minutes and May 20th, 2025. Village Board meeting minutes, if correct, and correction of mistakes, if any. Tim and Amanda, questions, comments?
I would just make a comment. I thought Candy did a really nice job of capturing our thoughts on the budget discussion in the meeting, in the minutes.
We have a motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A public comment. This part of the agenda allows the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as opposed to... Anyone here for public comments? Count? Okay, moving on. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $480,514.78. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tim and Tom. Questions, comments? Tom?
I have one. It's... Let me find it. It's 3906 Safe Built Wisconsin. These are building inspections. I guess I was just wondering, what is the... It's $23,000. I'm just... Is this a quarterly bill? Is this an annual bill? Is this...
That would be the monthly bill.
It's the monthly bill?
Yes. So it's the portion of building permits that we collect that we have to pay to save the build.
Was this unusually large?
It's probably a little larger than normal, but we've had a lot of new residential home building permits pull, which are larger building permits. So it'll probably be like that most of the summer.
Anybody else? Lynn, please.
I just wanted to, I guess, check in, but also to just reiterate for those who are watching or looking at this. On page 17, item 13094 and 14133 are art fair shirts, logo design things, and the exterior mural. That's all coming from donations, and we are passing through that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Perfect. Just thought we should remind the public that there's a lot of things on here that we receive funds in return for, from other sources.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Tim, second by Tom. This is a roll call, please.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Mankey?
Yes.
Kniffer?
Here, yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in 6A through 6C. Tim, Jason. And Tim. Questions on this one? Carry on. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item seven, reports of committees under for discussion and/or possible action. A sustainability committee, one, electric vehicle charging station site to submit for charge up Dane County. Accelerating the transition to EV transportation for all initiative. Who might speak on this item?
I'll give it a shot.
All right.
Okay, so I am a representative for villages in Dane County on an EV commission through Dane County. And within that commission, we are currently taking proposals for future sites for EV charging stations around the county. They call it an RFP process, although it's not so much... It's more just a proposal, like asking for proposed sites at this point. A quick background, this is funding that was given to Dane County through the US Department of Transportation. It's a two-part funding program. The first part is to design and map out where these charging stations will be. And then the second set of funds is to actually implement where those proposed sites should be. There is obviously lots of question around federal funding right now. So I can assure you that the first part of that funding has been given to Dane County, and we are continuing... Or we're going ahead in the planning purposes. The second piece of funding is slotted to come to Dane County upon the completion of the first step. There are obviously questions about that, but this is happening in other states, and those states are actually already in litigation around that. And so the idea is that Wisconsin is going to go through the first part, and then, once we get to the second part, hopefully those things have been figured out. Because, again, this was awarded, it just isn't actual... It's been frozen, essentially, in terms of the second spot. So proceed as if this is really going to happen, because it will probably very likely happen. This is not just a Wisconsin thing. This is a national program. Okay. EV stations. Lauren, if you scroll down... Okay, so basically, that's perfect. The commission is looking for sites that meet a couple of criteria. So the first is high-density urban and suburban areas where residents who would lack the access to private charging networks could access those. Rural areas, specifically villages and towns, they're very much focused on us. And then sort of hubs, places where we can support public transit, but also things like commercial spaces, things like that. Obviously, this commission is reaching out to private entities who would have parking lots. But municipalities are welcome to put in proposals. So we took that to the sustainability committee, and they put together a short list of sites that we could look at. Oh, before I move forward, I should mention this kind of charging. So it's a level-two charging. It's not the fastest, it's not the slowest. The idea is that it would hopefully be used for short periods of time, potentially overnight, should someone need that. But the idea is that it wouldn't have to be overnight. How am I doing so far, Martin? Anything I've missed? Okay, so in terms of the municipal side, the Village of Oregon would have a couple of options. In the sense that if one of our sites got picked, we could manage that site. Or we could have a vendor manage the actual EV station on a municipal site. So this is not signing us up to run an EV charger or charging station. That decision can come much later. This is mostly just the idea of where in the village do we think it would be most beneficial to have some of these charging stations? And again, meeting the idea of residents that need this because their private residence doesn't necessarily have that charging capability. Can you scroll down a little for me, Lauren? Keep going. Okay, this is the list that the sustainability committee put together. There's a little bit of nuance here. So the public library is obviously a site that we thought would be interesting. However, that would need a little bit of approval from the library board as well. So if this board was apt to want to do that, we would need to be in conversation with the library board. Obviously, Village Hall, Senior Center, Parks... Senior Center, probably the potentially new senior center, if that's something we decide to do. That Park Street area that will have the new angled parking, potentially. Highlands of Netherwood Park, and then Kaiser Fireman's Park. Couple of reasons why some of these sites were chosen. Depends on who you ask, but the Dane County requirements for this ask a site to have five parking spaces designated to EV charging. Now, I don't believe that those five spaces have to be together. So you, like in Village Hall, you could put two back here and three up in front. It's just that on that site, there needs to be at least five spots. Now, some people will disagree with that. We actually have a really cool source. His name is Brant... Not gonna get his last name right. Brant. We're gonna go with Brant. He lives here in the village, and he works for the Electrification Coalition, and he knows everything about this. This is what he does day to day. And so he's come in, coming to the sustainability committee meetings to help us understand some of the nuances. Because this is a federal program brought down to the county level, there's a little bit of federal requirement, Dane County requirement. And at the end of the day, what we both think, Brant and I and the committee think, that some of these requirements may not necessarily be hard and fast rules, but they're simply just trying to get a better guideline for people when putting together their proposal, proposed sites. Okay, I'm almost done. We have to have proposed sites by June 13th, 19th, something mid-June. And so we need some direction from the board as to what sites you would like to propose. And if there aren't... If there's a site on this list that... Or that is not on this list that you think should be considered, speak now or forever hold your peace. Well, probably not forever. I do think that there'll probably be a couple more calls for more sites. But for right now, we want to put in as many or as most likely sites to be picked as possible during this first iteration. Okay, now?
Amanda and then Tim.
Yeah, I just have a question first. So is there... I know you said that these sites could potentially be used for overnight charging. But do we know how much of a charge someone can get from a level-two charger in an hour or two hours or three hours? Like, to try to figure out which types of sites or amenities where we might want to have that charging.
I suspect Tim may have an answer.
Yeah. No, you can't get squat in an hour from a level-two charger. You might get like 20 miles. It's not gonna do you any good. I think this whole plan is really a well-intentioned mistake. The idea of providing charging for people who live nearby to be their primary source of charging is 20, 30 years from now? Before people are starting to adopt EVs without having an in-home charger? Most people who own an EV have a charger at home. That's their primary charger. It charges overnight, okay? And then you have the range you need for the rest of the day. If you go beyond that range, you need a public charger. If you need a public charger, you need it to be a fast charger, okay? And the mistake that's been made in public chargers all over the Upper Midwest, I've been to a lot of them, is that a lot of times they're way too slow, and then there's nothing to do while you're waiting, while your car charges. What makes sense to me is to put them near restaurants and other businesses, and then advertise the fact that we have EV charging, and encourage people who live in Stoughton, Fitchburg, Verona, Madison, Wanahe to come here, charge their car while they have lunch. Charge their car while they have dinner. That makes sense. The idea that someone who lives in an apartment nearby is gonna charge, so they're gonna put their car on the charger, leave it to charge overnight, it's gonna finish at 3:00 AM, and then somebody else is gonna come out and swap cars at 3:00 AM? That's not gonna happen. So it's gonna wind up just sitting there, occupying a charger while not charging a car. That's happening at a lot of public charging places right now. That concept might work at a hotel. A hotel it might work for, but if it's not a level-three charger, it shouldn't be a public charger, in my opinion. I know the Fitchburg Library has one, and what does that do you? You're in there for 20 minutes or an hour, and your car gets 10 miles extra range? That doesn't solve anything. The issue with electric vehicle ranges, you wanna go to Milwaukee in the wintertime, you can't get there and back on one charge. At least my car can't. Because the range drops a lot in the winter. That's the issue. So I'm really kind of frustrated that they came up with this plan, because the idea is, oh, this'll get people to adopt EVs. I don't think that's true. I think that when I talk to people who don't own an EV about the hassles of public charging, they all go, oh, yeah, I'm not getting an EV anytime soon. Because it just doesn't... It just isn't built to be convenient. If you wanna go to Indianapolis, forget it. It's just, it's not worth the hassle in an electric vehicle. Because there aren't charging stations along the highway like there are gas stations. And then they're, you know, five, 10 miles in, and then there's nothing around them. So you stop, you plug your car in, you try to find a bathroom, then you try to find lunch, and you're just wandering around a big Walmart parking lot. So I really think that the value in public EV chargers is a fast charger with amenities around it, where the businesses can get a benefit from it. That's my rant.
Lynn?
Totally hear that. I think at the end of the day, I think we might need to shift the mentality that these are not... These are not sites. The village is not going to provide sites that will do that, right? Because we aren't... Well, we don't have a lot of parking space downtown anyway. And we're not residential spaces where people would be able to spend a good amount of time or a shopping center. What I think we need to look at these as are the 20-minute charging. That you're right, doesn't get you much, but in Brant's case, he lives here in the village, he has kids, he goes to storytime every Saturday with his kids. I think it's a nice way to encourage him to be a part of village services by having a charging station for him to plug in for the 20 minutes, 30 minutes that his kids are at storytime. Or Village Hall, my kids go to soccer here every night for an hour. Not every night, feels like it. Every Monday night for an hour. You know, I know for a fact that there are some parents on the team that have EVs. And I think it's a way of the village acknowledging and encouraging sustainable living, not long-term huge, you know, charging, being able to go long distances, but saying, "We want you to think about this because we've got spaces in our community that can accommodate that need." But that's just my perspective. I just think we might have to shift a little bit when we talk about the village sites.
At some point, will there be a commitment, a financial commitment by the village in this program?
Martin? This is not a time to shrug your shoulders.
So, and Lynn, maybe you can expand on this too, but I believe there's a law passed that we are required to... If we are the operator, the owner or the operator of these chargers, that we have to charge the electricity. We're required by law. Or we can have somebody else operate it for us, and they have to charge the electricity for it. So presumably, if we have these, they're... They should be either owned by us and sustained by the charge that we have to make, or they're owned by somebody else who is sustaining them through whatever financial means that they're sustaining them through.
To me, that begs the question if... And to Tim's point, if they're level-two chargers, Tim has raised the question whether or not they're going to be used. But we're gonna have a... At some point, I suspect, we're gonna have to invest either the infrastructure or we're gonna have to pay someone else to do that. If we hire a vendor and they're not used enough, are we setting ourselves or may have to pay a minimum charge to the vendor? I'm very sympathetic to Tim's point, and that is if level-one, that's the best charger. So if you had level-one charges on that strip along Park Street that you're talking about, now you people can come downtown, spend a half an hour, and get something out of that charger. But if, I think, if you own an EV and you have a charger at home, you're not probably gonna count on that charger down there. It's... It might be a feel-good thing, but I just don't think you're going to do it. So I am concerned about the cost to the village. I'd have... Need to know more about that. Go ahead, Tim.
The other point I was gonna make is that you have to be careful with charging an electric vehicle to not damage the battery. If you charge it between 80 and 100%, too often you kill the battery over time. And so the idea of topping off your battery, you don't do that. So, and if you're down at the low end, and plugging in for 20 minutes is gonna get you enough to get home, I guess, but really... I get pretty nervous when I get down under 20 miles range, because you don't know how reliable it is anymore.
Sure.
So I just, I don't know how this would add actual value to the people that use it. I can see people using it, but not really getting anything out of it.
Just?
I have questions that I think we would... I'm hoping... So first of all, Lynn, on this, are we making a commitment? Or are we just saying we're open to looking at these things? So we're open and looking at... Because there are a number of things that I have questions for that I don't think are figured out yet. So does the grant cover the installation costs, the repair of the parking lot? Those types of things, because the library parking lot's new, the senior center. Especially if we go forward with a new senior center, that's a prime time to do that type of thing, because there's gonna be no parking lot there in installation for that. From what I understand, because I've worked with the church in putting these in, when you set the electric cost for them, if they get used, the money comes in. So it could be an income source for the village. Now, how much that income is, and what that means for our revenue, and how that affects our levy and all that fun stuff? Because it goes up one way and it goes down another, and there's just lots of things that I have questions about and would love more information about.
We're prohibited, but prohibited from making a profit and stuff like that, so we'd have to do, you know... We'd have to charge what it's costing.
Lynn, I think you're next. Then Amanda.
The only thing I was going to add is, yes, we can't necessarily profit from this, but we do have EV. We have at least, we have one EV vehicle, and the goal is to have more. You could feasibly... So let's just say, in this example, we have two EV chargers behind Village Hall and three in front. We could contract with said vendor to have access to said EV charger in the evening, like in the overnight, for our EV purposes, right? So there is a little bit of potential benefits, like Phil's saying, not necessarily profitability, but there are obviously some payoffs that we could potentially have as well.
So just to interject on that one point, so the law that I referenced is Act 121. So for... I'll just read this here. So a local government unit may own, operate, manage, or lease an EV charging station containing a level-one, level-two, or level-three charger if it is not available to the public and is used solely to charge vehicles owned or leased by the governmental unit. So when we wrap in use of that charger for our operations, that charger can only be solely used for our operations. We can't then turn around and then use it for public use as well.
Can the vendor?
Yes, I suppose potentially if there was a vendor, so then it goes on to list a few other things. So if the vendor owned it, it would have to be made available to the public. And then it doesn't speak to whether we can use it or not for our purposes. It might get a little dicey if we're using it every night, then there could be some contention that it's not really available to the public, that we're using it for our operations. So we'd wanna be a little careful with that.
So I have to say, I know some people with EVs, but only one of them is a renter. And it is a struggle for her to find a place to get it, but she lives in Madison. And when she comes out here, she looks for a place to charge. But she's also stated multiple times that level-three is the gold standard, because you can charge quick and fast, and it just makes more sense. If you're looking for overnight for renters, it seems to me that we should be really encouraging new developments, multi-family housing, to look into joining a program or something that would help subsidize it, and then we'd have those places available for renters. I don't know that it makes sense to have a charger at Village Hall unless the person is renting, like just down the street and can walk. You know, like otherwise, how do you get back to your car if you leave it overnight? It's just, it's... I don't know. Logistically, I think it would make more sense to have just level-three charging if it's available. I really feel like that's the way to go. And then I totally support all of these places having at least one of those chargers. And I probably have thought of a couple more places, right? I just don't know that the value of a level-two charger exists enough to warrant installation and all the things with running it. I'm kind of struggling with that, because I, I mean, if people have EVs and wanna chime in, you know, let us know. But I, again, I think that most people who own EVs tend to be homeowners, and they have a way to charge overnight. And I don't know. I... I'm struggling with it, with that level. If it was level-three, then yes, let's talk about it, because I have ideas.
Is that... I mean, what stages is that, Lynn's program? Are they opening the idea that maybe level-two is not the way to go?
So I do not believe that we are allowed to dictate. We, meaning the commission. This is a federally funded program, and it's determined... The structure of it is determined by that federal program, is from what I can understand. I guess my question back to the board, basically from what I'm hearing, is does the Village of Oregon, is, are we, as a municipality, not interested in participating in this program? And I only ask that for two reasons. First, I'm a representative for villages in Dane County. And if my village is not necessarily interested, I think it's important that potentially we swap out my space with another person of a village who is interested in participating in this. And second of all, I just really wanna be careful here, because I really feel like this is sounding very like, if it's not good enough, we're not interested in it. And I wanna be very careful about that, because while I think really fast charging is great... the idea is that we're trying to add public accessibility and encouraging sustainable living. Obviously, I agree. I would love it to be the gold standard, but it's not. And there's not anything, I don't believe there's anything that I or the commission can do about that. And so I guess if that's the case, is the consensus of the board, we'd rather not? And if that's the case, I'd be happy to take that back to the commission.
Well, I think, as, as you said earlier, we're not making any type of commitment now by saying this is where we propose to put these sites. And it sounds to me like you would like this board to come back, potentially at the next meeting, and have suggestions on where these sites might go. Is, is that accurate or you're looking for something tonight?
I think that the deadline...
You'll, you'll have to make the decision tonight because the deadline is the thirteenth, which is before the next meeting.
I'm sorry. And all five need to be in the same place? Is that what, is that what I understood or you said earlier?
All five parking stall, yes. I think it reads that up to five parking stalls need to be used. I think it's like four charging stations and one needs to be for sure ADA accessible.
Yeah.
So basically, they're saying the space of five stalls needs to be dedicated.
But they all need to be, for instance, they would all need to be on Park Street, is what you're saying.
They'd all need to be within the site, yes. Like the Park Street one, I would imagine, yes. Village Hall, I think it could be different spots of this parking lot.
Yeah, I, I think, to me, I'm sorry, Tim.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure it can be different sites because you're going to put a lot of infrastructure in
Right.
to provide the energy to it.
That makes sense to me.
So I'm not sure they would accept like two sites. That would be, be much more expensive is all I'm saying.
Okay. Again, I think that that cost is covered by this grant, the implementation of the site.
But as far as, I'm looking for a commitment to the village for certain sites, right? I mean, you want to, you want to be able to propose those. And I personally am fine with the ones that you've suggested. I would hear from other board members if they want to add or subtract any of those. Tim.
Can I make one?
Please.
somewhat unrelated point, there is an event tomorrow evening put on by the, by this organization, the Charge Up Dane County at the Business Hub in Madison from six to seven thirty. I was planning to attend that and try to understand why they went down this avenue as opposed to one that made more sense to me. And I could certainly ask them some questions if we have more flexibility than what we're reading into it.
Well, it sounds like we need to make a decision tonight. So I'm looking for a consensus that we can agree on sites that Lynn asked, or the sustainability committee has suggested.
Are we, are we talking, there's additional sites we can add to this later? Or these are the sites where we have to go with? I'm, I'm just thinking, I mean, as we look at these, I'm thinking, you know, a downtown type of set that are somewhere close to Jefferson Crossing or, or the, or the new senior housing that's being built there would be, make more sense as a location kind of thing. But I'm not sure what the flexibility is. I mean, if we, we made the commitment here that this is it, I'm a little hesitant on that.
It just, it just needs to be, the village can speak for it at this point. You can't suggest a private property. Yeah, so as long as the village has some ownership of or jurisdiction over it, then we can suggest it.
So, yeah, so it'd be more like Waterman Park or something like that.
Amanda.
Oh, thank you. I'm okay with these sites, but I have to say the ones that sort of float to the top for me would be the senior center because we haven't built the parking lot yet. And if we can put them in and then pave, great, you know? Like that is a, this is the time to decide whether it's going to go there. I can see people spending multiple hours there. You know, you might go for lunch and stay for a program or go to a program and then stay for lunch. You could spend two hours or whatever there, which makes sense. Public Library is a place, I don't think you're going to plug it in if you're just running in and running out again. But if you were going to stay and do some research or read a book for two hours, I could see people spending time there. That makes sense to me. Village Hall, I mean, if you come to board meetings, maybe, but I don't, I don't foresee like that as a place where people spend a lot of time on, well, I mean, soccer, maybe, but games are an hour. Whatever, maybe, that's a maybe to me. I think a senior center and public library are the more obvious choices. Park Street is kind of the same as the senior center to me. It's right there. So like wherever you want to stick it is fine. It's still downtown. And Highlands of Netherwood Park, again, you're looking at the length of a game, maybe, probably for an hour or so. Spending multiple hours there? I don't know. I'm kind of iffy about that, too. Kaiser Fireman's Park, if you go to Summerfest, maybe, but like that's once a year or, I don't know, same thing. Like if you're just looking at an hour, that doesn't seem like a lot. But we have a couple of places on this list where there's potential for multiple hours of staying. And that's where we would want to focus, is my opinion.
Well, it, you know, it, it sounds like we have, because we have five and a couple of those, I think we're general agreement, there's no objection to those. So if it comes down to that point, probably the senior center or something like that. So to give the committee the information they need going ahead tonight, can we agree on the five that we have? Do we need to add or subtract any?
I would add Waterman Park, just as a...
And can you have more than five, Lynn?
Yeah, I don't think that there is a limit.
Sure, well, let's add Waterman Park then.
Okay. I do think that it's worth, we should look into when we would feasibly be implementing these, assuming that all goes well. Because senior center, Park Street, Waterman have potential construction in their future.
Sure.
And so if we find out that it is within the next two years, are we still okay with Waterman Triangle Park?
Yeah, it's probably going to go slower than past, than past.
I would, yeah.
If, if it's not canceled wholesale.
And it's got, it depends on where, right? I mean, you know, some of the plans keep some of the parking spots. Like if you had the parking spots closer to the restaurants and things, those might be the ones to look at versus the ones that are right up against where the ban shell is, for example.
Okay, so we have six that were, sounds like we were agreed on.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to approve those for future, for submission at this stage without making any future financial commitment by the village. That's my motion.
And make a second.
Discussion. Jason.
And then just to clarify, this is just for us to continue in the process. And if we find out it's not for us or it is for us and all the things, we can make that decision down the road.
Correct.
Yeah, it doesn't commit us to anything.
Okay.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight, unfinished business, unfor discussion and or possible action. A, alcohol beverage license, license applications. One, amended premise description for Corolejo, Joy, help me with that pronunciation. Two, Mexican Grill LLC, Agent Athalia H. Leon located at 135 South Main Street, to include outdoor patio area authorized by conditional use permit. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tim and Jason. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Ziggy's had the same patio commit. So basically we're allowing them to do the same thing. Questions or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two, class B beer and class C liquor wine only license application for La Roca Enterprises LLC. Change of business name from La Roca Pizzeria LLC. I will now open the public hearing. Joy has a brief explanation of what's going on here.
So this is just being held as a public hearing because after her husband passed, she changed her name. So due to that, there's no real change to the business itself. But because it's a name change, we have to do a public hearing notice.
Okay, do we have anyone here from a, a petitioner? No, okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Village Board discussion and possible action on this application. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented upon a satisfactory on-site inspection by the building inspector. Tim.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Amanda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, annual alcohol beverage license renewal applications for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. See list of applicants in the village board packet. All current license holders have submitted for renewal except for Oregon LLC DBA Pizza Pets. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, new business, additional discussion and or possible action. A, recused from Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce authorizing exemption to park hours ordinance for Oregon Summerfest special event in Kaiser Fireman's and JCU community parks until the hour of 1:00 AM between June 20th and 22nd, 2025, and request to waive the $200 in required permit license fees for the event. I see that Ida's here in case we have any questions from the board. I can tell you that this is a routine exemption that has been authorized for many years. I don't think there's any change in what we're proposing here. As I try, Amanda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Tim. Further questions? Amanda, please.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with this. I'm just asking about, I know the, the people who come to set up the carnival arrive earlier and does this need to be extended to include those dates for those people? Or is it, I mean, because they're clearly there after 10:00 PM and they don't work for the village.
Has that been an issue in the past that you're aware of? School property.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Good enough.
Good question. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. We have a motion by Amanda, seconded by Tim. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only. No action by the village board will be taken. Reports are in the meeting packet. A, the village administrator report. Questions? B, police chief report, notice of revisions to criminal investigations policy, which is on the packet. Anything to add on that?
Not on that topic.
And C, police chief report, Oregon Police Department, 2024 annual report.
So I wanted to maybe do a more thorough review of our annual report than I normally do. This captures what we got done in 2024. One of the reasons I really had to get it done ASAP is well as because we're up for our accreditation onsite in October. We actually pull a few of our proofs where we're proving in poli, you know, that we're following policy in different examples. So this is in front of you. And actually, I'm going to ask, do you mind pulling up that mission statement? I'm going to have Lauren pull up our mission statement as I, I talk about this first part. I don't know how many of you have gotten a chance to read through the annual report in depth, but if you haven't, I would strongly urge you to not only pay close attention to the message from me, but also our goals and what we've been able to accomplish. You know, with the community expanding the way it is, at the speed it is, it certainly created some challenges. But then add on to that, just nationally, how competitive this profession is because just people don't want to get into it, like many other professions. We're not the only one, teaching the medical field. What's unique about ours is that it, it takes a lot to get in. If you're not already in law enforcement, you have to get certified. First, you have to get a degree. You have to get certified. You have to go through field training. So you're looking at about roughly, you know, just with the certification and field training, seven months. And that's hoping everything goes well and they pass all the tests. This profession's different in that having, and maybe it's the same in other areas, but having to work alongside experienced people retains people. They want to work with people that, this isn't the first time they're going to a gun call or a domestic or a person attacking an officer. Because yes, while they've been trained, it's really not until that first time they're in that particular incident that you know how they're going to react. We are a young department. We're not the only one, but we are a young department. What I will say, no matter what challenge our department's gone through, and that's, I will say over my entire career here, whether it be an officer-involved death, a significant incident causing fatalities in our community, whether it be a leadership issue, whether it be staffing, our department has always come back to our mission statement. So I want to talk briefly about that. It's, it's kind of a common sense mission statement, but when you're trying to provide public safety to a community, you need to make sure your eyes are always on the ball and they have to be focused on exactly what that mission is. So I'll just briefly cover it. The mission of the Oregon Police Department is to safeguard the lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidence and fear of crime and to enhance the public safety while working with the diverse community to improve their quality of life. Our objective is to do so with honor and integrity while at all times conducting ourselves with the highest ethical standards to maintain public trust and confidence. So when I talk about, when I walk us through this annual report, I'm going to talk about things we've cut, but things we've done to try to pivot to still follow our mission statement. So again, I can't thank my staff enough for how much in the last six, seven, eight years they've dug deep to take on new work, to take on new responsibilities and to just pick up a lot of overtime even. So I do thank them for that. I am also incredibly appreciative to these young individuals that want to still come into this profession. And I am very proud of what we have to offer somebody coming in. I think they are set up for success and I tell every one of them that not only with the training they receive from us, but the support they receive from the community. So to move on to the, the structure of our department on page one there. This will show you where, where we were with staffing in 2024. It actually looks worse in 2025 so far. But again, we're focused on that mission statement. We're not going to focus on the negative. We're going to get back up staffing. We're going to find great quality people and we're going to move forward. With the 2024 accomplishments, obviously with staffing and some funding issues, it's an uphill battle. We kept, we kept trucking along. As far as the two officer minimum goes, it's still a top priority. For those viewing, this doesn't mean that we only have one officer on at all times. What this means is that a lot of officers pick up overtime to help backfill and so we can have two officers on. What I will say is because of such a quick growth in our community, we bypassed the two officer minimum easily. We now have county trying to come in and help us, but of course their workload is heavier, too. So what we are finding is, you know, the community is waiting longer on calls so far. You know, they've been patient. We, we are very appreciative of it. But this will continue to, you know, get worse as we go. I bumped down to the recruitment initiatives. We've made a significant progress on that. It's still ongoing. It will forever be ongoing because we want to make sure we're finding the right people to serve our community. But as far as recruitment, we did a recruitment video. I shared it with all of you. That really produced some positive outcomes. So we're going to continue on that. In fact, this week, that's the training I'm on is in, is, the FBI is providing some PR slash public information officer type training. It's real high-level stuff, so we're hoping to bring that back as well. So we're always working towards that. The self-defense program, that is one that we just continue to kind of bring year to year. I can assure this board it's going to happen. I can assure this board it's going to happen, one way or another. There is so much benefit in it. I'm an instructor in it. It's not easy to get staff up, but we're actually bringing an agency out of Detroit to come here and train. And they're going to, it's all covered expense-wise, but we're going to actually have our staff trained. And shockingly, we're actually one of the few now pursuing this in the state. It's much more common in Michigan and some other states around us, but not Wisconsin. And I think that's also due to staffing issues. But I will say there is a lot of drive and passion into that program. So by the end of this year, I do envision we will be set up to go and then in January, hopefully roll the program out. As far as school safety collaboration, we have, we continue that every year. I will tell you, in 2025, we're starting to see some negative impact with staffing. We had to pull back. We just didn't have the staffing to do the training on school site, more for our police department. It would have been a huge benefit because we've never trained at the actual high school tactically and worked through what are the challenges specifically with that building. But we will keep it on our list of goals to accomplish. As far as when we're talking about goal, you know, accomplishments we set in 2024, or goals we set in 24 that we accomplished and then ones we're looking at 25, you know, right now it's very strategic planning. With the staffing, the experience and the funding we have, we have to be very strategic on what we're doing. And so really try to get into the mindset of how can we be more with less? So when you're looking at some of the things we've done or we're doing, an example would be the drone. How can we observe a large area with maybe only two or three officers on? You get the drone up in there. Same with the canine. As far as the UTV, you know, I, side note, like, you know, several years ago, it's been a while, but we had a pretty violent sexual assault on a walk path that connects to Oregon. It was just outside of our community, but that's certainly something we've never, we haven't forgotten. But a UTV is doing more with less. We can cover more ground. We're building more housing over by our walking paths and by our parks. And a lot of that area is not lit. It's not, it's just randomly traveled and some of it's wooded. So there's certainly some concealment for somebody that wanted to do another person harm. Can we be on a UTV 24/7 on a trail or a park or by a school? No. But even if they see us once, maybe they'll think again. But we certainly will have that out as much as we possibly can. And of course at our parades and at our special events, but again, UTV, doing more with less. Just trying to find ways, unique ways. With, when you're talking about a two officer minimum and we're talking about an increase in calls for service that require more than two officers, you're talking more violent crime, we have to start considering that when you have less officers going to those types of calls, the chances of officers having to use force increase statistically, hands down, they increase. So we need to not only look at how much training we're offering to our officers, what our budget looks like for that, but also you've seen over the last couple of years, we've replaced our handguns to make sure they have the best tools. The less lethal, I know there was a question about what exactly is that? So years ago, departments had beanbag guns. Maybe some of you have heard of that. What ours are is it fires a, it's actually breaks in half and it's called a launcher and it will fire a sponge tipped bullet. It's only to just incapacitate the person so that they're no longer a threat. But they're far more accurate than the beanbag gun. But yet again, it's a tool in a very, in a type of call where there's a very high, very high probability that deadly force is going to be used. And if time's on our side, we can maybe use this instead. We also upgraded our tasers for the exact same reason. We want to make sure our officers have these tools so that if they have to use force, we can hopefully use the least amount of force possible. For accomplishments in 24, we've had some of our instructors leave. This is a, this is a hard one to do because to even qualify in the state of Wisconsin to become a certified instructor, you have to have three years of service as a law enforcement officer. So our list on our roster just shrunk significantly. And what's happening is it's putting more pressure on our most experienced officers. So you're having both lieutenants become instructors in multiple disciplines. You have me becoming an instructor in multiple disciplines, but then our sergeants, our field training officers, we're all trying to spread it out until we can get these younger officers to that three-year mark. They are excited. We've been talking to them about goals. So we see a future with that. It's just going to take time. And it's the same thing with the field training officers. We have three in the academy right now. They're scheduled to graduate in July and then they'll go through the field training program till about November, taking on three new hires with maybe four, five FTOs. That's going to be a challenge. So it's just trying to make sure we keep adding to that. So those, these were accomplishments. They take a hard hit on our training budget as well. For goals in 2025, number one, retention and recruitment, hands down. You know, we see, you may see some departments picking up people from other police departments so they're not, they don't have to send them to the academy. We're just not finding qualified people applying to our department that are certified. So we are having to go through that seven-month wait and really hoping it all works out. And the academy is a pass/fail, constantly pass/fail process. So it's a gamble, but I will say we have found some excellent officers and I'm very proud to have hired all of them. And I can't wait for you to meet the three that are coming to you in several months. We're, as far as recruitment, we're becoming more engaged on social media. With that though, unfortunately, one of our recruitment tools is community engagement. That's one of the reasons people apply to our department. Problem with that is with our current staffing, we've actually had to cut our community programs in about 50%. We're not accepting that though. We're pivoting. We're trying to find programs that have less workload that we can pull off and still stay engaged with the community. So again, it comes all back to that mission statement. We're not going to just stop and say this isn't something we can do anymore. We can only do 20% of community engagement. No, we're going to keep finding things to do. And our officers are very motivated to do that. The two officer minimum, I already spoke to. We are scheduled in October to go through the full accreditation process with Wiley. That's about a three to four month preparation. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have any investigative unit. So our lieutenant that oversees investigations is handling detective work. So now, you know, Martin has spoken to this before about how some of us are carrying over vacation because we have so much work to do. We have timelines to meet. You know, just recently Rudy, she's now getting pulled into accreditation. I will too. We'll all, you know, team up together because again, it's all about that mission statement. And accreditation, in my book, is imperative. I think every police department should be fully accredited in my opinion, but we will stay committed to doing that. I talked about the UTV program. Our UTV did come in and now we're working on policy language and training. So that'll be rolling out soon. When I talked about, you know, the use of force, the statistics of that increasing, it's there. We've also been going to gun calls more often or potential gun calls. So one of the goals in 25 is to do the rifle rated ballistic shield deployment. It's to replace our old ones. They expire after so long. We, and we just moved to this, so this is a little behind, but the portable radios, that is our lifeline, is our portable radios. So we upgraded those and I thank you all for pushing that forward. The women's self-program, I already talked about. Drone operators, I told you why. Again, that's doing more with less. We've had some great success already with the drone program and we're going to keep building upon that. Before I move on to any more of the annual report, in my opinion, the accomplishments and goals are the most important. That shows you the path we're going towards. I'll talk more about the calls for service and things like that, but does anybody have any questions about the goals and accomplishments?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate how transparent our police department is. So thank you for all this information. I guess, are there any, is there anything we can do to reduce turnover? It seemed like with a lot of the goals, like we were making progress and then somebody left and that kind of, you know, really pulled the rug out from under us. Do you have thoughts on things we could do to keep more people from leaving?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're working on some things to sit down with Martin and Lisa on about comparables. I think that's one element. And I think, I think what really goes in our favor though is the community support and the board support. So we'll get there. But yeah, I think one of the difficult parts is you really want to find people that what motivates them is doing this work. You're not getting paid a dollar extra at another department an hour. So we're going to continue to look for people that have the right motivation as well. But we'll be looking at comparables.
Just out of curiosity, how many of the officers that we have reside in the village as opposed to in another municipality?
I believe one.
Interesting.
One lives in the village and one lives just outside.
Is it encouraged that officers live where they work or?
20 years ago, yes. Now, no.
Okay.
With social media and just other factors.
Do you have to reside within like a certain number of miles from here, correct?
Yes, yep.
Yep, can you, what is it? Is it like 30 miles?
30 miles is a crow flies for the union. It's built into the union contract.
So they do at least live within 30 miles.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just was trying to, you know, if people were having families here and raising their kids in this community, there might be more of an attachment for the officers to stay, even though they could be. But if that's not how it works, I was just trying to get an understanding of that.
I think part of it is you have to be able to be off duty at some point.
Right. So, okay, so moving on to the new hires and promotions, we had a big year in 2024. We hired three, all great hires and they're doing exceptionally well in our department. Officer on hire just became an armor for our rifles. We didn't have anybody to do the inspections and he stepped up, took on that. He was super excited and did a fantastic job. You know, we had Lieutenant Niehaus promoted and then two sergeants. So a really good leadership change. Not that it was bad before, but it's certainly put a lot of energy back into the department. What else I got next here? All right, so we had 9,880, I'm sorry, 9,828 calls for service in 2024. Out of that amount of calls, we had two citizens complaints. Both were exonerated, which means that the incident they responded to was, you know, the response was justified, lawful and proper under circumstances. So if you want to learn more about that, I could certainly share more about how we deal with citizen complaints, but we have a very lengthy policy that we follow very closely to make sure we look into those. The next one, out of those calls for service, again, the 9,928, out of all those calls of service, we only had 17 use of force incidents in 2024, which was a 0.17% of calls for service where the force was used. Below gives you an idea on the graph, but sometimes I can't pick apart the colors, so I put the number next to the each type of force. Well, I will say, we talked about upgrading the tasers, adding the less lethal and things like that. And as you can see through the numbers, they are getting used, they're getting deployed. That doesn't mean they were fired, but that goes to show you that what we're, what the village is investing in to give these officers is not only being, you know, pulled out during the call, but it's working. People are de-escalating and complying then. The one that some of you may have questions on is what is the arc warning for the taser? So the type of taser we have has two buttons on each side of the taser. And what it does is it'll make a noise and just show the arc. It doesn't deploy anything. It doesn't harm the person, but it is just another warning. If we can give it, we have time to give it, we'll give it because we just want compliance. We do not want to cause any sort of harm if we can avoid it. So yeah, our most common use of force is the escort, compliance hold. I defined below the passive active countermeasures in case anybody wanted to learn more about that. We've unholstered a taser two times, arc warning once, never deployed the taser in 2024. We unholstered our least less lethal, three times, but we did not deploy it. So we did not shoot it. We unholstered our firearm five times, but did not fire. And then we dispatching an animal, putting it down if it's been sick or hit. What I will say is when you're seeing these use of force tools pulled, but they're not being used, that's a sign that the officer's engaging, that language, having that conversation and getting people to de-escalate their behavior. So again, those tools are working and I want to thank the village for allowing us to equip them with them.
Well, and I think that suggests good discipline by the officers to not let it keep escalating. Because a lot of times when something gets pulled out of the holster, it's going to get used around the country. So I salute your officers for that level of restraint, that ability to stay
Thank you.
kind of focused. That's great.
Thank you. Now this one may raise some eyebrows. The calls for service, so you're going to see a decrease. And I know the question would come up, the community's growing, why is there a decrease in calls for service or police services? It's just simply not the case. What is happening, and I've talked about it several times when I've given monthly activity reports, is you're seeing this decrease because officers are spending more time on calls that are reactive. There are domestics that are taking two to six hours or a disturbance or a drug investigation. Anytime, especially with those two officer calls, that time expands. When it expands, it gives them less time to be out on patrol and identifying traffic violations and suspicious vehicles. So, you know, in 2024, calls for service declined to 9,928. That's down from 10,424. I can guarantee you, if we were fully staffed and were able to do that traffic, this number would be more like 12 for 2024. While this might appear to signal reduced demand, the reality tells a more complex story. And I'll just skip down to simply the calls for service data reflect our limits, not the lack of community need. The next several pages are just our IBR reporting. That's what we're required to report to the FBI. I cover a little bit of training. People sometimes just like to know what it looks like and pictures seem to really give the best depiction. So I'll show you some taser training, firearms training. In the middle, Lieutenant Niehaus is in there with our women's self-defense. That's what she looked like and I was in a much bigger red suit. She was beating me up. So the one on the right there, where you see Officer Gilbertson and then Officer Krantz and he's holding what looks like an orange, longer gun, longer barrel, that is our less lethal launcher. So that's what that looks like. Very clear that it's not a firearm and it's just this little barrel. We cover some of our special assignments. I will say our officers take a lot of pride in the special assignments they're assigned to and they continue to show initiative to not only join them, but to improve them, which is awesome. We do the red, white and blue event. I think some of you have been there. If you haven't, I really encourage you to come. It's great. Not only do we attend, but we bring our families and it is really neat to introduce, you know, my kids to the board. I remember one year I introduced my oldest to Randy and he told Randy that if I got sick, that he could take over as chief. So it's just a really nice time, you know, if you're looking for, you know, how to really connect with our officers, you know, try to retain these really great people. Being there at these events is kind of nice. You get to know them and their families.
Chief, I serve on that committee and just so everybody knows, put it on their calendar, that's August 28th, which is a Thursday evening this year from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. And hopefully it's not 165 degrees like it was last year. It was really hot last year.
Yes, it was very. What we do is, we do give out awards at this ceremony because for our segments, same with fire and EMS, they go to these terrible calls and no matter what, they're going to go home and whether they talk to it, talk about these incidents with their loved ones or not, they're going to feel it too, you know, the way. talk about these incidents with their loved ones or not, they're going to feel it too, you know, the wives, the children. So, we want them to be front and center to watch when we, as a community, we, as a police department, celebrate their accomplishments. So, it's a pretty cool event. I encourage you to take a look at these awards. There's some pretty amazing awards in here. Our community engagement, it's certainly one of the reasons, you know, we talk about how do we retain people? I would pivot that and ask, how are we retaining the great people we have? I would say community engagement is one of the biggest pieces. My team loves community engagement. That's what makes them who they are and the best for this community. We do Special Olympics, Shop with the Cop, Halloween, all kinds of good stuff. For now, we've cut some of our programs, but many of our staff actually volunteer their own time away from their families to come in and do these things, especially when it comes to the K-9, because that's predominantly, it exists because of donations. So, our officers, you know, really believe in the program, they'll donate their own time. The same with Shop with the Cop, they donate their own time. With all that said, one of the things I wanted to end with, I just recently attended the Memorial Day ceremony and then an event at the Senior Center. And the questions I get now, and I'm not surprised by it, I've always gotten them, but they've certainly been on the uptick, is traffic complaints. And when you're looking for, you know, what's the negative impact right now to policing? There's many, you know, with not adding staff, population going up, not retaining experienced people. It's going to take us longer on calls because we have officers that are not as familiar with what all needs to be done. I know on Facebook, there were a few comments about officers going car-to-car to talk. That's done because we have younger officers talking to more veteran officers, making sure they got everything done right. Any questions, any concerns? Because they don't want to go back to the police department, because that's just more delayed time of them getting back on the road. What I will say is, I do anticipate, all of you as members of the community trustees, you'll start to hear those complaints about traffic. Our staffing is, unfortunately, this is, that's one of the biggest negative impacts right now, is our traffic. We can't be out there proactively policing as much as we want to. And so, I tried to relay that to a few community members that were talking to me, if we will try to get out there. But it's a challenge right now. We're getting tied up on calls. Some understand, some are frustrated, and I get it. We don't, you know, brush our hands off and walk away. We're still focused on that mission statement. So, any minute we are available, we're back over in those areas looking for traffic, trying to keep our streets safe. But I would say, especially when it comes for the calls for service and you see that decrease, it is because of the proactive policing. We pull case numbers whenever we're proactive policing because people ask, well, why were you over in this area? We saw you talking to this person and this person. Here's the reason why. We always document, and that's just taken a significant decrease. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I know I delivered a lot there.
Yeah, I had a couple, just looking through the calls. I was surprised to see we had two kidnappings last year. Those like child custody-type issues or?
It can be. Or it can be a domestic-type incident with a kidnapping.
I also saw, I think it was 27 DUIs. So, more than two a month. I see commercials all the time for the Tavern League, having a program to give people rides. Do our local bars participate in that program, do you know?
No, and, you know, I, before working for Oregon, I came from a community that the bars were far more active. I would say, after midnight, there's not a lot of activity at our local bars. I think it's a lot of commuting through. But yes, our OWIs are up, and those take a long time. And unfortunately, now that, you know, you see more CBD and marijuana and narcotics and fentanyl, it's a lot more in the mix, we're finding more blood draws. So, blood draw adds on at least another hour, if not longer. And it's two officers. Keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. The first is that I do think, Tim, you're bringing up a really interesting question, which I don't want you to do on a future report, but I think it's important to remember that the numbers that we're looking at equals time, right? This is not a quick call. The average DUI probably takes one to two, three hours, I'm guessing. I don't know enough. These domestic incidents, right? It's not a quick, okay, we're okay. These are hours and hours and hours. And so, I think it's, one of the things I think is so unique about your annual report is that it's so, such a great example of the tip of the iceberg. There is so much that we do not see, that we're not supposed to see, right? You guys do your job so that we don't see it. But it's still there, and it needs to be recognized. And I think that that's, it's why this report is so helpful to me as a board member, to be able to see a little bit behind the curtain of the things that I don't get to see day-to-day. And then my last comment is a part of your report that I didn't see that I think is also really important. When I was at the Memorial Day ceremony, I saw some officers who were off-duty standing together. And I think that that is such an important thing, that these are people who want to spend time with each other when they don't have a uniform on, that they feel loyalty to each other, that they, they know their families, and they know their loved ones and significant others, or they're just willing to stand next to each other at a ceremony on a Monday that they're supposed to be off of work. I think that really goes to show the power of your department and the work that you're doing. And so, I just wanted to applaud you for that because I don't know that anyone would have noticed. I noticed, and I thought it was really cool that they chose to spend some time together outside of their work, and that's a great sign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business. Any announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Let's start with department heads or staff. Anyone? Ann Villas-Parte. Jason.
Just a reminder, public art fair is coming up a week from the Saturday on June 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Triangle Park. Have over 30 exhibitors and have food, and I believe we have face peaking as well, so.
Had me at food. Amanda, please.
Just a reminder that the Transportation Committee is still looking for members. We are down to three people, which is barely quorum. Please, if you have any interest, and you don't have to know anything about transportation, you just have to live in the Village of Oregon and be willing to talk about transportation options in the village. So, please apply. There's an application on the website, and you can always pop into Village Hall here and pick up an application. Thanks.
Tim? The Oregon Area Historical Society is being supported by Culvers this evening. If you go to Culvers, some of the money goes to them. If you've never been to the Oregon Historical Society, it's a pretty cool thing to walk through, so.
All right. Don't forget, this Saturday night is the outdoor movie night at JC Community Park. We're going to be watching Inside Out 2, one of the, I love that movie. So, bring your family, bring blankets, chairs. Concessions will be available. And don't forget that Oak Street is under construction, so come in on the South Perry Parkway area.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I believe our business is conducted, so without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.